All right. Call the order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands. One nation under God, equal and just for all.
All right, 3.0 is roll call of all school board members and everyone is present except for Hanks. I say president, everybody is present except for Hang Slavin. We also have a student rep which we'll get into in a minute. But 4.0 is approving the agenda, so I'll move to approve.
All second.
Okay, any questions or discussion on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. 5.0 is communication reports. We'll start with enrollment update.
Um, look at the enrollment update. I wish I had better news.
Yeah.
If you recall, we were up all thirty students last month when we got to the fifteen days out. Meaning after fifteen days, kids that happened, baby, or just well, the eleventh, or what is September. A good chunk of kids weren't shown. So I mean, I, I, I just went through, it's a quick number. Seniors technically down six, down three, and we're up one, ninth grade is flat. Eighth grade, and then again, this is not out there, it's, it's now faint from what was on there before. And again, majority, we know where they went and things like that. Seventh is flat, sixth is down three, we're up one and fifth, down two and fourth, down one, down three, down three, down three. And then the homeschool numbers are up about twelve. So all in all, it comes out about, I think it's thirty different probably where one. The ones now that, oh, sadly.
I apologize for not having my mic on. For, for the ones, there, there's only, I have to turn in a report actually to the county. There's actually only two kids that we don't know where completely went, meaning we didn't get requests for records to transfer or whatever. And there, there were four, but two, they had a verbal, we just haven't seen it. So it's, it's not that where are twenty kids, it's, it's they're gone, they've, they've left, they've moved. Not many just going from here, I'm saying to Fisher, I mean, we're talking move, move, you know. And then there's, there's two that have actually dropped out, so to speak, you know. And so the county's working on one of them because it's a fifteen year old kid. The eighteen year old is, is done, you know, unless something changes. So anyway, that being what it is. I would say we actually lost compared to where we were. We're two kids up from where we ended last year. But if you recall, your graduating class was small last year. So we were, you know, guessing we would be up fifteen, twenty, you know. And we're not at this point, so.
Okay, any questions on enrollment? Carla for finance.
Good evening.
Thank you.
All right, I love when I get to come up here and say, not much has changed from last month, but last month. But really, nothing has really changed much from last month. We're gonna jump down, since we're pretty even on the first two sections, we're gonna jump down to the expenditures program. General fund expenditures private program. I wanted to point out, our special education is up a little bit over last year. And that's generally right now because we're spending some of our MA dollars that we've gotten that are sitting out there. So that's increasing our percentage used. And then our instructional support, that is where like the new bus we bought sits along with the new SUV and our Chromebooks and staff devices. So those are the two points that are kind of glaring that look a little bit more from last year. Any questions on that page? Alrighty, and then going on to page two of the board report. Just a note for food service is that the revenue kind of shows at two percent right now. And that's just because our claims are delayed by month. So they'll be, actually showed up today. So they'll show up in October's board report. Any questions there? All right, and then last but, but least, the treasures report. We're down a little bit in our cash position, but we'll just continue to watch the trend and, and hopefully swing it back the other way. So. That's about all I had.
Thank you. Any questions for Carla?
No.
Thank you. All right, 5.3 administration and department head reports. We'll start with Superintendent Korver.
Perfect. First of all, and, and I'll let Easton introduce himself, but just for the public, we have Easton Anderson is student school board rep. I don't know if Mr. Laura will talk about it or not. I believe there were four that were interested and Easton got selected and we're off and running with that. So he'll start providing reports and again, feel free to throw questions if there's things you're interested in. I, I told him you were nice and want to bite, so. Anyway, just running through a few things. First off, your homework nexus, when Rob was here, asked for some community contacts, if you recall. And so he's to a point, he's looking at coming back on November third. And again, he'll reach out, I mean, not to say you can't, I'm just gonna use an example, whatever. If I was asking Amanda or thought Amanda would be a good person to be on kind of a steering committee, a community group. He will send a letter, an email, then reach out by phone, introduce himself, kind of talk about a process. You're by all means, you know, can ask someone, but I mean, he'll do, you know, a lot of the work if we want, you, you know, type deal. So his thought was if we could get three from every board member, I've given him a few. But he's not gonna get all three, you know what I'm saying? That some people know it's not gonna work out or whatever. So if you could name a phone and an email, or if you want an address, he'll send out actual, you know, letter, whatever. He'd just like to start reaching out and having some contact. And occasionally he'll meet with people when he comes to, you know, if there's some that, hey, can we chat about ideas or whatever? Before kind of bringing them together, which will be down the road, but it just takes time. So what's your thought? I mean, can we, within a week, get, like I said, I said I would compile and send him a list. I know if we don't put a deadline, I know it'll happen. What's?
I would, I mean, we should all be able to think of three by the end of the week, I would think. We can just email them.
Email me by Friday or something like that, if you can. You want me to send you an email for a reminder?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I will send you something.
Yes, please.
Okay, and now keep in mind, if you've noticed, often I do like two. Okay, just to save some time. I won't do all six of you because then we can get a chain going or whatever. But reply to me or reply to whatever, so that's that. Just wanted to give a little bit, not this last Friday, but the Friday before, we spent some time on strategic plans. Again, just, just jotting some things off on how we're doing, where we're doing, who's working on what. So I just throw it out there. I do have, it's not put up in here, I got a copy framed for each of the buildings. So I believe probably every office or somewhere in each building, it's gonna be public. I got a, a set to put up in here, we haven't gotten them put up yet. And then forgot the webpage and Nancy has that to get, get put out there now. So just giving you a heads up, we're, we're looking at things, working on things and, and, and moving, more to come on that. Good news, last time I meant solar for, solar for schools, we did get the thumbs up for phase one. So we made it through there, they have money set aside, assuming we can get a, a second round approved. And so we're often moving on that, it's a fairly quick timeframe. I think it's December eighth or something like that, I have a call in two days with a guy that helps us with the RFP. Because what'll happen now is we'll put an RFP together to select a group that actually helps write the grant. And they're the ones that would do it. So it's kind of, you throw it out now and say, put your proposal in, here's what we want, here's how much we have. And then they come in and we'll get final, it'll again, all come to the board before anything's a thumbs up or thumbs down for approval. So just giving you a heads up there. I have something and I, I don't know what you guys get from emails, we belong to the Northwest Service Co-op, okay? They have four board openings for school board members, if anyone's interested. It's technically a four-year term, they realize, you know, there's no guarantee, well, I guess any of the year, four-year, yeah, you know, from, it'll be January first, I assume. But if anyone's interested. We have an application, technically the board's supposed to say, yeah, we got command or whoever. So I guess I'm just asking. It's, it's October twenty-first is the, the deadline. So I mean, we'd kind of have to know tonight if someone wanted, you know, to have their name put in, there's an election process, whatever, not saying you have to, but I just got a copy of this. And so someone does maybe in your report tonight or something, say, hey, I'd be interested. And I mean, I don't think we need formal action, we just need, you know, or two people or three, whatever. The teacher contract is on tonight, assuming, and I do recommend, the committee will recommend that and we can talk about it. But we will then move forward getting the principals scheduled, that's the, I think, the last group and then the at-wills. That, that those two have to get done. So assuming that that gets taken care of, I will work with our negotiation crew and then with the principals. At least I assume they want to negotiate and, you know.
Be all right if they didn't.
Yeah, so, and, and the only other thing I wanted to spend a few minutes on is the girls hockey co-op. And, and just to kind of throw it out, I've had conversations over the last few weeks. But I want to say about probably a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, we were approached and the conversation to consider a co-op. And we had, would we be interested? And so then Scott set up a meeting with, because again, it had come to Scott originally. But with their, I'm gonna say leadership group, it was not for this year, it was for a year from now. Because they had inquired, I believe, of getting out of the co-op agreement. And Crookson was not interested at that time, you know, for this year, at the end of a two-year agreement, they can't say no type deal. So we started pursuing and having conversations for a year from now. And so we brought it forth last meeting to consider, we had some discussion, which again, I thank everyone. I thought it was good discussion, good points, it was all cordial and that's fine, it doesn't matter if you believe one way or the other, it's the way it should work. And then I believe some of you got, maybe all of you, I don't see every email, got emails from different people and this and that. We had some continued conversation with the AD and the leader from Sacred Heart, things were moving. And I want to say probably Wednesday or Thursday of last week, there became some concern because Crookson wants to add, I think it's fertile, I don't know if it's climax and fertile, so they want to do that for this year. And so they approached Sacred Heart going, we want to add them. We're gonna have a meeting on Monday, meaning tonight, to approve a new co-op. And we need to know if you're in or out. And so then Logan, the AD contacted myself, we had some conversations. And, you know, for the most part, the board was gonna decide, I don't know, you know. And, but he felt he had to give them, you know, his word one way or another, or Sacred Heart had to give their word one way or another and went, I don't know what to tell you, I can't move our meeting up, we're, you, you know, it'll be dealt with. I believe, and this is my own opinion, could have said yes if we would have approved it, their board, you know, both boards have to approve it. And they, their board doesn't meet for, I think it's two weeks or roughly in a couple of weeks. You'd then have to vote it down. They chose, and I'm just gonna say, they chose not to, if they give you their word, they wanted their word to be good. And so again, I don't know what process they use, they chose then to rescind it from us. So several people have asked, why don't, why doesn't the board still consider it, you know, go through the, well, we don't have anything to consider now. There's really not a school asking to co-op. You know, next year, we might be sitting here having the conversation again, but right now, once they verbally withdrew it, it's not us saying we won't consider it. And so that's where we're at. And, and like I say, and again, no different than I said before, I would have supported, you know, but it doesn't matter now. And so that's where we're at. I don't know if you have any questions. I did include, because this was asked for, and then it was asked for girls hockey numbers. And so Scott worked with the city to get, and they, what they did is they took the projected numbers and just pushed them forward. And they did it for girls and boys both. So I, I still included it. Because I think if you look, you, you know, the, and, and I think it's the way it was presented, you know, the, the group in high school right now is not the issue. It's when you get, you know, five, six, seven, and so on down is where the numbers are gonna be a problem. And I don't think it's a secret and we'll see where it goes. And hopefully there's groups out there working to recruit more and, but, you know, the, the, the reality, and I'm just gonna pick on any activity. Well, most activities athletic, you know, when you get to eighth, ninth grade, if you're not in hockey or basketball, you're, you're probably not coming out. Yeah, you know, not to say you couldn't have a fifth, sixth grader start skating, I think you could, or start playing basketball. But if it doesn't change in the near future, numbers come up. If we're all sitting here five, six years from now, it's gonna be, you know, a tough conversation, you know. And I think even if Sacred Heart came on board, it's possibly gonna still be a tough conversation. Because when you start getting, wherever it is, the one number was fifteen. You know, that's, that's a challenge for a hockey team. So anyway, any questions on that? I mean, just trying to, like I say, again, I think it was all cordial. No hard feelings one way or the other, it is what it is and, and we move on and see where we are a year, two years from now or whenever.
Yeah, I guess I do have a comment. Said, I, I just appreciate all the, the emails from the community that I was getting on, you know, there, everyone's fighting for their kids and all that stuff. I guess I would, I would like to see more people fighting for other things in our school, you know, like, like, like bus drivers and, you know, the lack of that. Other things that we have to offer the public, I wish the, that, that passion was held in the educational side of things too. Not just the girls hockey, because we got a lot of emails for that. But I really wish that some more of that stuff would come, especially from the educational standpoint, when it comes to some of those things.
Other than that, I don't have anything else, unless you have questions of me on something.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Sierra and Melissa know tonight?
I can start with Sierra, she has conferences and so. So from New Heights, conferences for New Heights night, three thirty to six thirty. So if anyone's listening and you forgot, there's still time. Also Wednesday from eight to eleven forty AM, or I should say, New Heights tonight and tomorrow night, three thirty to six thirty. And then Wednesday, eight to eleven forty, reminder, no school for K to five on Wednesday. Thank you PTO for sponsoring an evening meal for our teachers. Book fair is up and ready for families to enjoy during conferences as well. Thank you to Ms. Palmer, Ms. Hoven and anyone else who helped to get things set up and ready. First round of field trips were a success, kindergarten went to the fire station, first grade went to the patch on the point. Second grade went to the children's pop-up museum. We're rolling with the WIN program, what I need for all students next week. It will be a twenty-five minute block of time where all students get additional support in reading. What this means is individualized to exactly what each student is needing according to their Fastbridge fall assessments. So there'll be some smaller and larger groups depending on where they are. Picture retakes Tuesday, October twenty-eighth. Approaching the end of the first quarter already on Friday, October thirty-first. New Heights has completed three of five fire drills and three of our five lockdown drills already this year. That's a good deal. Thank you to volunteers who come in and help in the lunchroom, they appreciate the extra support. Thank you to our very own high school students who come every morning to help with morning supervision and breakfast. And that is what Ms. Hang Slavin sent in. I don't have anything from Melissa.
Okay, that's fine. Great, Matt? Hold it down.
Hold, thank you. Usually Sierra and Melissa do it for me. Things going on at the middle school, fall sports are wrapping up with most of them actually already wrapped up. One big shout out just to the seventh grade football team who did not let any other team score against them this entire season. That is the first time that Coach Enright said that has ever happened to him, so it's been very exciting.
That was the point spread.
What was the?
Two hundred to zero.
Two hundred to zero. Good job at seventh grade and all other activities that were happening at middle school. We are finishing up our CAPD test, which is the assessment that the state of Minnesota is having us give to our students who are possibly showing characteristics of dyslexia. To give a quick overview of it is with the new READ Act, now that it's moving into the secondary world, middle school and then high school. And maybe Mr. Laura is gonna talk about it a little bit as well. Basically, our students, based on local criteria, which we use the MCA and our STAR data. If they're showing that they're not proficient or at grade level on those, then the state of Minnesota has contracted, worked with, decided that we are going to use this CAPD exam. Which then breaks down what parts of reading we might be struggling in, so we can give more focused intervention. And so our, this is the first year that it is happening at the secondary. And so it's a little bit experimental for us as we figure it out. We are working right now to get a training scheduled with our English department, as well as our special ed teachers to try to get some more information of what we do with this data, how we do interventions and all of that. So you'll hear more about READ Act and CAPD as the year goes on. As we start fully implementing in the secondary level. So we actually assessed, or will have assessed, we had a view that we're gone or missing for sports and things like that. Two hundred and seventy students at CMS, meaning that they were showing that based on their MCA and their STAR reading that they possibly were not at grade level. And so this CAPD again, just dives a little deeper into the specifics of maybe what part of the reading process. So about half of our student body. Which it will be good when all is said and done, because we'll really be able to figure out how to help these students if, if they need it. Some, we actually looking at the CAPD, some are, maybe just had a bad day on the STAR and will not need any extra intervention because they did well. Other things going on, field trips are happening, seventh grade, a couple of weeks ago, went to the pumpkin patch. Very good, sounds like students were awesome, Mrs. Vetter went with that one. Students behaved. Last Friday, I went with, and many teachers, with the sixth grade to Itasca. That was a lot of fun. Again, students were awesome, very well behaved. We got to, I think we had ten thousand steps by ten thirty, eleven AM. I had a parent, I was just talking with this afternoon, that said, that night, their kid was just out of it, like they were ready for bed. So that was a lot of fun, the sixth grade, again, they were, they were awesome, they represented the school well. We even got to crash a wedding. If you'd like to see pictures, they're online now. There happened to be a wedding happening at Itasca and so there, there may be some sixth graders in the background of their wedding photos. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up for the middle school, October twenty-second and twenty-ninth, those are from three thirty to six thirty and will work much like an open house. So come when you can make it work for your family. This Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from one to three, we have the powwow taking place at the middle school. There'll be a Bison Taco Bar and it is open to anybody that would like to join, so come and join on the twenty-fifth from one to three. And then last kind of activity that's happening or happening in the near future is middle school robotics is starting up. And actually, their parent meeting is starting very soon, it happens tonight. But if you're interested in, your student is interested in robotics at that middle school level, reach out. We want students to be involved as many things as possible. So there's a quick overview of what we've been doing for the last couple of weeks, month. Are there any questions from any of the board members?
Questions?
The, the powwow's the twenty-fifth, right?
Correct.
So it's not this Saturday, it's fall.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I just.
Two Saturdays or not. Yep, twenty-fifth.
You said the date right, I was just.
Thank you.
Obviously at the high school, we do something wrong, we don't ever get to go on field trips, so. I'm just going on field trips then. So, no, like Mr. Torgerson said, we are also involved in the whole CAPD STAR MCA data collection. As, as he touched on, we, we basically started with their MCA scores for all the grades nine through twelve. Their most recent reading MCA score, which would have been either one or two years ago. If they were proficient or excelled on that metric, excelled, they were exempt from it. Technically exempt from any other testing. We decided as a district, I believe, to test everybody in STAR no matter what. So that could have been another data point and was another data point. So if they met or exceeded on the STAR, that also really excluded them from doing the CAPD test. If they didn't, which for us, it was fifty-six ninth graders, fifty-four tenth graders, eighty-two eleventh graders and seventy-two twelfth graders. Those people took the CAPD test on two of our Thursdays when we have advisors. So there's six subtests that they could take, we decided to do, do the state, the state minimum and do all, uh, the four, the six. It was a thirty-question word recognition, thirty-question vocabulary, thirty-question morphology and anywhere from thirty-two to forty-one questions of reading efficiency. Did it on two different advisor times because it ended up being about twenty minutes each time, right? So we just finished that up last Thursday. They got a score on each one of their tests, it could be weak performance, poor performance, high performance or strong performance. And like Matt said, we're still trying to evaluate what that looks like, if one test has more weight than the other or how that looks. I have the scores for ninety-plus percent of the kids because some were absent. But we'll be figuring out what that looks like, if that exempts them from more interventions. Obviously, as you know, the interventions that we do right now for this semester are during that advisor time, which was only twenty minutes for. Are during that advisor time, which was only twenty minutes for each week, which isn't enough. But, um, those people that we determine will, that will need more, um, intervention. Will get and go into that learning lab that we talked about the beginning here, they'll go into a learning lab next semester and get either pulled out. And if we get a interventionist or a strat, a reading strategist, and if not, then the, the, the learning lab teacher will help them. They'll have probably some other I X L stuff that we'll do with, uh, you know, targeted to their needs, if that makes sense. So that's where we're at with that. So lots of stuff, lots of data, lots of things that we're analyzing, so, um. I don't want to steal Easton's thunder, because we talked a little bit earlier about what things he was going to talk about. But, um, I do want to mention just briefly that girl soccer plays in the section championship tomorrow, so that's awesome. Um, Ruby Leach is going to state in tennis, um, so after her year off and, uh, some foreign country last year, she went, studied abroad. Now she's back playing tennis and winning, uh, so she actually got second, but to take the top two. Um, our rest of our fall teams are going to be soon in playoffs, so good luck to them. We did have parent teacher conferences, uh, October eighth from three thirty to six thirty, quite a few people there. I was, I was pleasantly surprised by the number, I would say at least a hundred parents or more were there. Um, and then we have a second session on November fifth, right after quarter one ends, so, and then we'll do kind of the same thing next, next semester as well. So, yeah, so lots of stuff going on.
I have a question about the CAPT E and maybe it's for either of you. Um, if your child is involved in that, do you get like? Information, yeah, scores, data?
Yes, yep, just like we gave out, uh, their M C A scores, I, they're, they're being given out right now. Um, and we can give that information out for STAR and for, for CAPT E as well, yep. They all have what they call I S Rs, individual score reports, yeah, yep, so.
Should we know where to find those as parents?
Uh, it would, talk, talk to the assistant principal, no.
I didn't know, like in parent view or what?
Uh, it, it's all on, we all have individual ones that we can print out.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely, yeah, so, okay, any other questions?
I'm going to actually go to Easton first because that's.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, I do want to welcome Easton, thank you, Easton, for, for being a part of our, this crew, so.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I've said, I'm Easton Anderson, I'm in eleventh grade and I'm going to be your student representative on the school board. To start off, I would like to start off with some activities going on. Student council is having a candy drive this week, Monday through Wednesday. Um, and then later on this month, uh, there is Sunday, October twenty-sixth. There is a trunk or treat that student council is hosting, I believe that is with activities as well. Um, people bringing their chunks and stuff. Um, athletics update, uh, girl soccer has a big game tomorrow, section championship versus Saint Cloud Cathedral. Come support our team. Football, um, our last home game of the season is Wednesday this week before playoffs. Volleyball, we have a game tomorrow night in Bemidji. Uh, winter sports trials is coming soon, so stay tuned for our signup and release dates. And then to end off, our fall musical is frozen this year, so mark your calendars. Show dates are November twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-third. And now I'd like to ask, is there any specific things that you guys want me to report on, um, things to look out for, stuff like that?
Definitely appreciate the updates on activities, it's nice to hear from the student side of things. But yeah, any kind of concerns that you guys are running into or things that, that we need to address as a board, um?
Yeah. It's pretty broad, but I think it's okay, right? Like, I think it's okay for you to bring things here that you might have. That the student body has concerns about or questions about.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if we need to limit it to topics or what have you. Um, I think it's okay to say, bring what you need to.
Okay.
That's fine. As far as us bringing or you bringing things back from what, um, we have said. You know, there are minutes that are published, that might be the easiest way to gather the information and disseminate them, um, if you so see fit.
It's nice for the students to have a contact though, and send to speak to you and say, this is what we're thinking about or whatnot. So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Easton.
Thank you.
Great.
Laura? I'll start with preschool tonight, um, we've been doing some field trips too, to the pumpkin patch. And then on Wednesday, the, um, East Grand Forks Fire Station is bringing a fire truck to each of the schools. And so the kids will get to not have to travel anywhere, but get to see the fire trucks, trucks, so that'll be fun. Um, we're working at the preschool level to align things a little bit closer with the K five. So one of those pieces is parent teacher conferences, we don't have our conferences right now, ours aren't until November. But for next year, we're going to work on aligning those so that we conference at the same time as, as K five. And another piece of that is the assessments, we're doing the fast bridge assessment this year with the preschool, which the, um, K five does already. So we'll do the pieces that are applicable for our little ones, but we're going to get started with that, um, assessment with the young ones too. Uh, and then moving to community ed, um, our after wave program is at capacity with sixty kids every day after school at New Heights, so that's been great. Um, driver's ed, after filling the needs of the East Grand Forks students in quarter two, we've had ten additional spots for Riverside students. So it's actually over capacity, but, um, Mr. Chono has worked that out to make that, um, work, so that's awesome. Um, and then I'm working on some classes coming up, focusing on some art classes at the elementary level that will be finalized. And more information coming on that soon, so lots of things happening. Any questions?
I got one.
Yeah.
With, with the after wave thing, is, you're saying that that's at capacity, is there any way that that can get any bigger or we don't have any more space for that or?
Right now, that's the space that we have and the people that we have that are available to work it. Um, we're trying to be really, um, sensitive of the teachers' needs for space and quiet space after school too. So we're utilizing the gym and the, um, lunchroom area mainly. And then after three forty-five, then the kids go to the discovery areas. They're outside too before then, of course, to play, but, um, yeah, space is, that's kind of what we have for space, at least with the arrangement we have right now.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, five point four committee reports.
I don't have anything else, but I will, um, pull one thing and I apologize for not catching with Craig being hired. We, we're going to put that under an action item, because that can't be part of the consent.
Oh, okay.
Um, so. So under, when we get to the consent here in a minute, take Craig Brot and we'll just make it an eight point two. Was just, yeah, and I, I should have caught it, you know, so, anyway, um.
All right. But nothing else?
Yep, no.
Okay. Uh, six point oh is a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Going to need to, as part of questions and discussion, we're going to need to pull Craig Brot from the hires and make him eight point two. Please and thank you.
The, the only other thing, and I, and I just want to throw it out there and we put it on here, um, the family resource center agreement, which you've done, I don't know how many years. I just threw it on, um, it's a technically a non-financial agreement. And again, as long as you're fine with that, they use for the most part a room over in the, um, A sec or in the senior high center, that building. And I just didn't feel, you know, that I necessarily should approve it, yeah, you know, without the board saying, yeah, we're still good with that, um, and so on. So I, that's the only reason that was thrown on there. The two foundation grants from high school league, I, I, you do those each year. Um, and again, Scott got those to us, so, um.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with that one pulled item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven point oh, opportunities for citizens to speak, I don't see any. Okay, eight point oh is district business, eight point one is to approve the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven E G F V A contract. As presented and attached in board book.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or discussion on the contract? Okay, all those in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight point two is to approve the hire of Craig Brot as a paraprofessional at C M S. I'll need a motion in a second.
I'm moved.
Second.
I'll have to technically abstain. Any questions or discussion?
We definitely welcome Craig back, just say, if people don't know, he, you know, he has worked for us in the past, it's just, uh, couldn't guarantee a position if we would have somehow filled it. Before he was able to return from, I'm going to say, other employment, so, um, we appreciate him willing to come back.
Yeah, thank you. He thanks you too. Uh, all those in favor of hiring Craig, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point oh, payment of claims and accounts.
I'll make the motion to approve the payment of K twelve bills, one three zero, one six five through one three zero, three six two. And the allow tronic trans, fund transfers in the amount of one million, five hundred, twenty-two thousand, two hundred, sixty dollars and forty-two cents.
I'll second. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to board member comments. Ten point oh, Josh, I'll start with you.
Uh, the only thing I got tonight is, uh, good luck to girl soccer tomorrow.
Yeah, I second that.
Um, I was going to bring up the, um, superintendent evaluations, we were supposed to have those done in September.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping, um, by the next meeting, everyone has their ideas together. Um, some of them I was going through have already been done, so we can cross those off and redo them. Um, I also printed out the strategic plan to go off of as well, but we need to get those in and then have a deadline for us for next year. As well, so that we don't miss when we say we're going to do it.
So why don't at the next board meeting, we just stay after, didn't we do that last year and then we just solidified everything and then?
Yeah, if you want to make the spreadsheet again or like whatever, whatever is important and then we go from that again or something, um.
That sounds good.
But yeah, we need to get it done, because we're about a month behind.
We are, yes.
So do you want, and, and just, uh, help me, do you want like a work session towards the end for everyone? I'm, because otherwise it has to just be a committee, you know what I'm saying, so.
Everybody.
Okay, work session.
Well, we'll just make it part of next meeting.
Yeah, um, other than that, good luck to girl soccer and that's all I've got.
Ellie? Easton, I should ask you, do you have any comments you want? Okay. Yeah, uh, good luck to girl soccer, good luck to Ruby, um, that's exciting too. And then volleyball start and there's all, so, I'm across country probably has, I'm, there's a lot, the fall, this is a good time. Uh, and then winter will start and. And then winter starts, so, um, let's see, trying to think of any. Congratulations on your first successful.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Negotiation, yeah. All right, next board of education meeting will be October twenty-seventh. Twenty twenty-five at five thirty and we'll have a working session afterwards. The twelve point oh is to adjourn, adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Great. Any questions or discussion on journey? All those in favor, say aye.